Welcome. And we are going to begin with the roll call. Sharon Warden, present.
Pam Perezza, here.
George Archuleta.
Here.
Virginia Houston.
Present.
Daniel Spence.
Present.
Rodney Walton.
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams.
Present.
We have everyone, Ms. Warden. Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. James Davis at this time for the superintendent's report. Ms. James Davis?
Okay. Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perezza, board members, colleagues. February is Career and Technical Education Month. I've asked Ms. Sheila Hughes to share a presentation with you this evening to provide you a glimpse into ECPPS Career and Technical Education Program. Ms. Hughes is the Director for our Career and Technical Education Department.
Ms. James Davis, I think Ms. Hughes may have had some connection issues. She seems to have dropped out. Ms. Hughes, can you do a mic check first?
Okay. So, we're gonna, gonna just continue with our status update for our return to campus, and then we'll come back to Ms. Hughes. Yeah, I see. Okay, so, just to give you an update for our return to campus. And Dr. Evans had given a similar update back in, I think, in December or early January. So, I'm gonna provide you with another update since we've now returned in closer to the end of January. I think it was January the 22nd. And so, right now, I entered, updated you on the elementary schools. And if you can see on this slide, it details for each school the number of students in the first column who are attending face-to-face. The second column gives the student population. The third column details those students, the number of students who during the second semester, again, which began when we returned in January, those students who are now new face-to-face students, again, starting in January. The fourth column tells, talks about the number of students who are still on a waiting list, who are trying to return to face-to-face status. And then, the last column are the numbers for the students who, at some point, were face-to-face, but now have returned to remote status. And then, for the middle school update, this slide tells similar to what that elementary update told. The number of students who are face-to-face. It gives you a total student population. Then, the third column tells about the students who are new to face-to-face the second semester, again, which began when we returned from the holiday break in January. The fourth column tells about the students who are still on a waiting list to return to face-to-face. And then, the last column details the students who, at some point, were attending face-to-face, but then went back to a remote learning status.
So, may I ask a question?
You may.
So, the students who are face-to-face, does, does that include the students who are new to face-to-face? Is that number added together? For instance, in the first one, third column has 32 been added to the 215.
That includes the 215.
Okay.
Okay, yes, sir.
What, what is the capacity for face-to-face in, in, I guess, either of the schools?
Well, each classroom has a, pretty much, could have a different capacity. And the capacity, again, just depends on how many desks or tables or whatever, wherever the students are sitting, that there is enough of that social distancing, and that's six feet. And so, each classroom could be different.
So, it's more per classroom than it is per school? So, the school doesn't have a set number, like, send 300 kids in, and we'll separate them. Once it's, you gotta make sure you got 10 kids in 30 classes in order for that to be the case.
We look, and I'm not sure if I'm following your question, but for each school, the principals went into each one of the classrooms or each one of the areas where they're holding instruction to make sure that that capacity was based on that space.
All right, so, it's just the classroom then, so it's not the school?
Correct, it's based on the class size, classroom size.
Okay.
In other words, each classroom could have a different number.
Right, because that's why we can't just say a flat number of kids are gonna go back into ECPPS.
Because it depends on the space.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And since you brought that out, it could be, like, for instance, tomorrow, we may have, I'll just say, two kids returning to remote from, and I'm just making any school, but it doesn't necessarily mean we'll be able to bring two more in, because it just depends on who's on that waiting list. If they're, you know, if it would be an even switch, if it's in that space, that's vacant. And if whoever's waiting to be remote, who's on remote waiting to come in, if they are in that, can go into that same classroom. So, it's not just an even switch out, because it just depends on the classroom.
Okay.
It just depends on the subject area.
Well, that's why you see the waiting list, because it would depend on the grade level or whatever the child is going through, whether there is an opening in that area.
Correct, yes, ma'am. All right. You may go on with the high school update. Is that Ms. Daffrey or?
Yeah.
And likewise, for our high schools, starting with Elizabeth City, Pasquotank Early College is in the first row, and in Northeastern is in that middle row. Pasquotank County High School is in the last row. And similar to the other two grade spans, you'll see the number of students who are currently attending face-to-face. You can see with their total student population. Then, the third column, again, are those students who are new to face-to-face this semester, again, beginning in January. And then, the waiting list that we have of students wanting to return. And then, we have that last column, students who have been face-to-face but had returned to remote status.
And just for clarity, again, on the high school, we have, we're doing just one section at a time because of the problem that you would have with changing classes between periods. It's one bell a day?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Okay. And the, because of the space in the hallways, it would be difficult to implement a change of class for every section.
That is correct. Like, at the middle schools, they would have a cohort model. So, that means that those students, they don't have to change classes. Teachers come to them, because all of those students are taking the same class.
Right.
High school, it may be, that first bell class, they may go then 20 or 30 different directions, because they're not all taking the same classes.
Right, exactly.
So, we wouldn't be able to just have a teacher to come into them, like we're able to do in the other grade spans.
But couldn't they do? Couldn't they, like, they're going to, for lunch during the day, they're going for lunch, and then they're going for a class in the afternoon only? Couldn't they go to a class before lunch, then switch classes? Or am I thinking about this? I don't see how that would be any different than?
So, what they do when they're coming in, in the afternoon, they'll get their lunch then. And then, they take their lunch to their classrooms with them, and that's for that class that they're attending. So, two classes in that, like, a cohort model, they could have the teacher to come into their location, but otherwise, they will have to go all over the building. And that's where we would risk that.
Okay, because I've been trying to run that through my mind, too, to see if there's any way to?
Well, because the contact timeframe is, like, 10 to 15 minutes. They're not gonna be changing classes for 10 to 15 minutes, right? I mean, that's the social distancing aspect, and they're moving, I don't know, I'm not one class a day in high school.
But the, the total contact is cumulative. And so, you know, they're, you know, risking, and we, of course, we're trying to limit that, you know, close contact, because even the way they're coming in, we're still, you know, making, trying to ensure that they're socially distanced. But when you talk about cumulative time, that may be a risk.
Right, that's why I was saying, if they came in, went to a class, and you staggered how they released to go to lunch, and then you staggered how they go to class, it could get in more contact during the week. Because that's, that's the, that's the concern I hear the most about from parents and students is only going to one class a day in high school. But, you know, again, you know, it has to, it has to work for transportation, and it has to work for, for this, the distancing. But that is, that's just a concern that's been voiced. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. And then, we're gonna have a, a status update for athletics. So, this is some middle school athletics. And so, they are gonna participate in two, both of the middle schools, at both River Road and Elizabeth City Middle School. Both schools will participate in volleyball and soccer. And you can see that did not have enough participation at either school for football, to have a, a football team. And cheering will not be held at either middle school due to not having a football team, because that's the sport that they would come out to cheer, that and basketball. But, and so, where we are now, both schools have submitted plans, and they are, have been approved. They've held parent meetings for their athletic programs. Coaches have been trained. We're currently seeking first responders. As you know, we don't have athletic trainers at the middle school. So, we are in the process of working with the emergency management to see if we can have those individuals, just like we would, like, hire someone from the sheriff's department to provide security. We're seeing about, you know, hiring someone from the EMS to serve as first responders at all of their games and at all of their practices. Because at the practices, those, like, at the high school level, the athletic trainers also help with doing the screening for, like, the temperature checks and all that. And so, that's something that the first responders would, would help out with as well. Tryouts begin March 1st. Team selections will be by March 5th. Practices will begin March 8th. And then, they will begin their contests on March 18th.
So, are they already in, are they, do they already have workouts going on?
I think they're gonna?
Going to start with the tryouts beginning on March the 1st? Okay.
It's my understanding, anyway, because they went through the process of getting those plans approved before we can do anything.
Right, right.
Okay, so, high school athletics, and here's the update. I'm sorry.
Are the athletic directors first responders also?
They were, but when we talked about, because of COVID, the, the, because of the monitoring they would have to do, like, one of the athletic directors said that he wouldn't feel comfortable, because he couldn't be in two places at the same time, because some of their games overlap. He said it was no way that he could be at a soccer match and inside for a volleyball game at the same time. And he wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. All right, so, high school athletics, the sports that we're gonna participate in the spring. Basketball is finishing up now. Soccer will be at both schools, and you can see, we're only gonna have football at Northeastern High School only. Other sports will be added as guidelines are approved, because those are the sports that are coming up right now. So, like, baseball, that hadn't even been approved yet through the, well, I can't say it hadn't been approved. The Hot, North Carolina High School Athletic Association haven't given any guidelines about, like, baseball yet. So, when those sports are approved, we will look into getting, you know, our teams approved to get ready to play those.
But that process is already, I mean, they already have some idea, right?
Well, they have some idea, like, some of the, like, for instance, wrestling is one of those high-contact sports. They just don't have anything from the High School Athletic Association about that yet.
Yeah.
And they're thinking, they're waiting to see how, football, that was just an opinion from one of the A.D.s, waiting to see how football goes, and then they thought they may see something about wrestling. They, they are expecting baseball, something to be shared hopefully soon.
Okay.
With the football, yeah, I'm not sure of the rules and regulations. So, Pasquotank looks like they're not gonna have a football team this year.
That is correct.
Is it possible with some of those eligible players for P, for Pasquotank? Could they potentially? And I'm just really in my mind, thinking of seniors who their last year playing football. Could they potentially play for Northeastern? I don't know how that works.
Well, we've already looked into that, actually. As far as the, the attendance and everything would still be the same, but, you know, they don't have any special guidelines for COVID. So, they would have to attend at the school where they, they would have to play at the school where they enrolled. And so, first of all, so, in order for them to, to Pasquotank players to do that, they would have to be enrolled in Northeastern. Now, we were looking at, you know, because this is a unique situation, allowing that for, you know, because of this situation for those seniors. And, you know, we, when we look, we would have to, they would have to transfer, which wouldn't be a huge problem. And we looked at them, maybe, you know, they would probably have to graduate at the school that they transferred. But because we know this is a special situation, you know, they could possibly transfer back. Did check with that with power school. The problem is, of course, is that they're taking. And to be enrolled at one school, you would have to take at least two school, two classes at that location. And that's where the problem comes in. Because not all the classes are, not all the classes are the same. We did even, did some spot checks on a couple of the players that we were seeing, but, you know, not saying that they would be interested in doing that. And it didn't work out in their schedule. Some of the classes that they need are not even offered at Northeastern this semester. And then, like, one of the students, I recall, they would only have an opportunity to take one class at Northeastern, but you would have to have at least 50% of their schedule would have to be at that new home school service school. So, we, we did look into it. And so, as you can see, they just, they had 17 players who, you know, attending practice to show interest. And one, four of them said they possibly join after basketball season. But, even with that, would only be 21 students, and they really would need 25, you know, to make a team. And only 14 of those played football during the 2019-2020 season, which means they would have a really young team, even if they were to, to get the 25. And so, anyway, they didn't get in anyway, so they, they don't have a team. And so, where are we? Their, their plans are in place for approval. They are to have parent meetings. They either have held them, or they are scheduled to happen soon. Coaches have, you know, either are training now, or they will be trained soon. Football practices begin February 8th. Scrimmages will be withheld, I guess, on Saturday, the 2nd. And contests will be played according to the schedules. Okay, and that's the update on both the face-to-face attendance and athletics. Do you have any questions?
Well, the question was, at the end of the athletic presentation, with regard to fans and fa, family and friends attending these games, like, is there any, I know other areas who are having a select number of people who were attending. Did we consider that, or was there any discussion regarding that?
We do have, we have the same. We have select, they'll have pre-ticket sales just to ensure that, you know, they only sell a certain amount of ticket, and that's, you know, making sure that we still adhere into the governor's order.
Okay.
And so, yes, we're doing that.
Okay, thank you.
What's the capacity for football, either?
Um, it's 25.
Outside?
He said 25 in that stadium?
25, I think outside it can be a hundred.
Hundred, hundred.
100.
Outside.
100.
That was inside that I was thinking about, thank you.
Okay, and that's for soccer, too?
Yeah, we just go by the, the current governor's orders when it comes to, you know, attendance, inside or outside. All right, any more questions? If none, we're gonna go back to see if we can, you know, hear from Ms. Sheila Hughes, our CTE director, as she gives us a, a look into our Career and Technical Education Program here in Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. Ms. Hughes?
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perezza, Interim Superintendent James Davis, and board members, good evening. And let me first apologize for my audio issues earlier. Next slide, please. During the month of February, career and technical education is recognized for its role in preparing students for college and careers. Our CTE educators and support staff help students to define their passion and discover their destiny. Next slide, please. So, what does CTE offer? We offer real-life experiences through specialized classes with rigorous and relevant curriculum. We also offer hands-on learning that put our students at the center of the action. And we also offer industry-ready credentials that aid our high school graduates to become globally competitive citizens, ready for post-secondary education and work. Next slide, please. So, in our middle schools, we offer programs that are support, that support vertical alignment to our high school programs. We are raising career awareness and exploration through our Friday Friends Career Chat and our virtual job shadow. We are currently working on a virtual transition course fair. And let me also point out that the Exploring Healthcare and Exploring Construction will be offered next year in a pilot phase. Next slide, please. So, when we look at CTE credentials, I have here our past three years. So, in 2019-20, we had 1,215 students enrolled in CTE courses. There were 1,000, 1,608 credentials earned. In 2018-19, we had 1,283 students enrolled with 1,846 credentials earned. And then, in 2017-18, we had 1,528 students enrolled with 1,382 credentials earned. Next slide, please. So, this slide represents the main credentials that we offer. And the goal of career and technical education is to replenish the workforce. So, credentials validate skills and knowledge of our students and are recognized in the labor market. Next slide, please. So, ECPPS's CTE offers nine of the 16 North Carolina career clusters. There are various pathways within each cluster. So, we would now like to share the nine clusters that we offer and how some of our students benefited. Next slide, please. Our first cluster, yeah, yes, next slide, please. Thank you. Our first cluster, agriculture, food, and natural resources. We have Ms. Davis, who was a 2020 graduate of Pasquotank County High School. She is currently enrolled in a community college, seeking her associate's degree in science, and she plans to advance her degree in animal science. Next slide, please. Under that same cluster, we have Mr. Boyce, 2017 Northeastern High School graduate. He just completed his service in the U.S. Army, and he's now employed at a meat processing facility. Next slide, please. Under our architecture and construction cluster, we have Mr. Krabs. He graduated in 2014 from Pasquotank County High School, currently employed as a manager for General Contractor Restoration Company. And Mr. Krabs wanted to share that, at Pasquotank County High School, I took every trade in industrial education course offered. Knowing little to nothing about construction before taking these classes, they served as the foundation of my education and my career. Next slide, please. Under our business management and administration cluster, we have Ms. Terry, who was a 2020 Northeastern High School graduate. She is currently attending a university, majoring in business administration. And Ms. Terry wanted to share that taking CTE courses were ve, very beneficial in me pursuing my business administration degree in college. I am currently taking a course that I feel I have already completed in high school. I know that the CTE courses that I have taken has I know that the CTE courses that I have taken has prepared me to successfully complete my degree. Next slide, please. Under that same cluster, at Pasco-Tank County High School, we have Ms. Respis, who graduated in two thousand ten. She is currently employed at the Operations Department, as an Operations Department leader for Proctor and Gamble. And she wanted to share, taking CTE business courses provided me with a strong technology foundation valuable to gain and maintain the necessary professional skills in the workplace. Those classes, along with Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, have also afforded me the opportunity to think critically, lead, and collaborate on diverse teams. Next slide, please. Under our Health Sciences cluster, we have Ms. Brown. She's a two thousand eighteen Northeastern High School graduate who is currently attending a community college, seeking an associate's degree in nursing. She is currently employed as a nurse aide level two at a home health agency. And Ms. Brown wanted to share that CTE allowed me to enter the workforce immediately after graduation and provided me with certifications that were necessary to apply for my current nursing program. Next slide, please. Under our Human Services cluster, we have Ms. Jones, who is a two thousand eleven Pasco-Tank County High School graduate. She's currently employed at an industrial bakery. And Ms. Jones wanted to share that while in school, I worked two jobs as well. I told myself often, this is only temporary. Next slide, please. Under our Law, Public Safety, Correction, and Security cluster, we have Mr. McCall. He is a two thousand nineteen Pasco-Tank County High School graduate who earned nineteen credentials at the high school level. He earned his final two at the Elizabeth City Fire Department, where he is currently employed. Next slide, please. Under our Marketing cluster, we have Ms. Ty Bowie. She's a two thousand sixteen graduate of Pasco-Tank County High School, currently employed as an optician, and she wanted to share that English wasn't my first language, so I did not have a lot of confidence speaking in front of a large crowd or leading group discussion. Joining DECA was one of the best decisions I made in high school. Not only did I, did the organization help me build confidence, but I gained a family. I wouldn't be where I am today without DECA. And let me also add that she has recently been accepted into optometry school, and she will be starting in the fall. Next slide, please. Under our Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math cluster, we have Mr. Brolls. He's a two thousand fifteen Northeastern High School graduate who attended a community college for his machinist certification, and he is currently employed as a machinist for the United States Coast Guard. And Mr. Brolls wanted to share, I use skills from high school every day at my job, reading blueprints and even drawing my own blueprints. And our final cluster, Transportation, Distribution, and Logistics. We have the twenty-twenty Northeastern High School graduate, Mr. Beaman. He attended the tra- a trade school and is employed at a caterpillar dealer. Mr. Beaman wanted to share, attending CTE classes helped me build a good base knowledge to prepare me for what I do now. So in conclusion, CTE provides students with technical, academic, and employability skills needed to succeed in life. Thank you for allowing me to highlight CTE in recognition of CTE Month. Are there any questions?
Middle school students? Or high school students?
I, I only heard half of your questions.
The Friday Friends Career Chat, is that for middle school or high school or both?
For middle school students.
Middle school. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The reason I ask, I saw where they had an opportunity to talk to someone who was involved with NASCAR. And I thought that was pretty, pretty neat. Um, probably pretty exciting for them, so I wanted to give a shout out to those of you who are implemental in, in having that take place. That's, that's a really good experience for those kids, an opportunity for them. So thank you.
You are welcome. And if I may, may share, um, Tanny Sawyer, um, Mary Luton, and Selena Lane have been um really great in helping to support CTE in this endeavor. Our plan is to see if we can farm this down to our elementary students and have them also take part in sharing this.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Thank you, Ms. Hughes, and thank your entire department for the work they are doing. We, we really do appreciate everything that's being done in the CTE program.
Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Okay. All right, I need a motion from the floor to approve the minutes for January twenty-fifth and February fifteenth. That's for the regular meeting on the twenty-fifth and the committee meeting on the fifteenth.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting for our January twenty-fifth and the committee meeting for February fifteenth.
Second.
Okay. Had a motion and a second to approve the minutes for those two meetings. Any discussion? Okay, we will have a roll call vote. Ms. Sawyer, Pam Perezza.
Yes.
George Archuleta.
Yes.
Virginia Houston.
Yes.
Daniel Spence.
Yes.
Rodney Walton.
Yes.
And Dr. Sheila Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Sawyer. Do we have anyone for public for, the public forum? No. Okay. Going on, we have a couple of uh agenda items from our committee meeting that we need to take action on. And Ms. Houston, I'd like to ask you to um propose a motion to uh move those forward, please.
I move that we um pass all the items on the consent agenda. Wanted to name them.
You can for the benefit of
Okay.
those listening.
All right. FBT zero, zero three, that's, those are budget demands. Um, FBT zero four, that's fundraisers. Um, FBT zero five, that's the audit contract. PC zero one, that, those are call, call policy updates.
Okay, there has been a motion. I need a second to approve those.
Second.
Right. Any discussion on any of those items? Maybe we have a roll call vote. Ms. Sawyer, Pam Perezza.
Yes.
George Archuleta.
Yes.
Virginia Houston.
Yes.
Daniel Spence.
Yes.
Rodney Walton.
Yes.
Dr. Sheila Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to our technology update with Ms. Godfrey. Ms. Godfrey, are you ready?
Good evening, Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perezza, Board Members, Superintendent James Davis, and colleagues. This evening, I'd like to share updates on the district's device distribution and collection plan, as well as ongoing initiatives and capital projects. Ms. Haynes will also share an update on insurance quotes and options. Next slide. Following the board's request from the February committee meeting, we are working to update the technology device distribution and collection plan. This plan includes processes for assigning student devices, collecting required documents, as well as the process for equipment return and collection. As equipment is assigned to students, parent, parents or guardians are required to complete and sign a take-home technology user agreement. We are reviewing the current agreement and consulting with our board attorney for updates and recommendation on, on his recommendations for the student and parent agreement. We have added a three-step device recovery process for collecting unreturned student devices. We have consulted our board attorney on this process and have taken his recommendations for each step. During this process, the parent or guardian will be contacted with a written formal return request. Step one, a formal notification for return of assigned devices is sent to the parent or guardian. This is a formal request for the devi- for the device to be returned within fifteen days of receipt of the letter. Step two, a second letter sent via certified mail for voluntary compliance is sent to the parent or guardian. Payment for the device is due immediately upon receipt of the letter. Failure to pay the billed amount or to return the device within ten days could result in commencement of further proceedings to recover the equipment or reimbursement for it. In step three, we are currently working with our board attorney to finalize step three of this process. As we review our current technology device and distribution collection plan, we are also making adjustments to our end-of-year collection procedures. All student devices will be collected prior to the end of this school year. Devices that are needed for any summer school assignments or programs will be assigned separately. In other words, students will return their device and then be reissued a device for summer school, and then it will be returned at the end of the summer school session. We will continue to support the needs of all of our ECPPS staff and students. Next slide.
Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perezza, Interim Superintendent Davis, and board members. Last March, prior to distributing devices, an insurance company recommended by other technology directors with one-to-one programs for a full, for a price on full coverage for three months and twelve months. The total for the twelve months was one hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. We reached back out to them last week for an updated quote, and the one-year rate is the same. We've reached out to three other companies for quotes and received one of, one back so far, and it's higher. We've also reached out to School Board Trust, and they do have coverage. They do offer one-to-one coverage, but at a two hundred and fifty-dollar deductible per incident for damaged devices only. It does not cover lost devices. Um, the North Carolina Department of Insurance also offers coverage for one-to-one programs for student devices only at a fifty-dollar and a hundred-dollar deductible for crime books. We submitted the information that they need to provide a quote, which we have not received back yet. Um, it does not cover lost devices either. So that's where we are currently with our insurance quotes.
So, so forgive me if I, if we repeated, if we said it last meeting. But do we currently not have any insurance on our devices right now?
We do not have insurance on the devices right now. So back in March, when we received the quote, we looked at the quote for the insurance and divided it by the, the cost to replace the device to see how many, where the number would be. And we decided that the number, the break-even number is like four hundred and ninety-eight. Okay. If we, if the, if we paid a hundred percent of the insurance. So we are currently not trending to be to that number.
Next slide, too. Okay, the, the onset of COVID has changed many things in our, in our world. We have all worked diligently to move forward and adjust to the new and changing needs of our students, parents, community, and staff. The Technology Department has worked hard to provide continued support in any way that we could. In order to provide continued support for remote and hybrid learning, we have extended our technology working hours and added online live chat support for everyone, including students, parents, and staff. In order to ensure the safety of our staff and parents, we have also implemented appointments for those questions that can't be answered during the online chat or for device repairs. Appointments can be made online using our Setmore Online Appointment System, allowing parents to book ap- book appointments at their convenience. This allows technology staff to continue to assist those with additional needs following all CDC safety guidelines. We're also continuing implementation, implementation support for the new initiatives we have rolled out this school year, including Parent Square, for consistent and instant communication with teachers, staff, students, and parents. Scribbles for online enrollment, student scr- student transcripts and transfers. DocuSign for online signatures for human resources and contracts. Online payments with K-12 Payment Center for collecting online payments and fees. And the ECPPS Launchpad for single sign-on for staff and student applications via ClassLink. Next slide. We are also excited to be leading the installation of the new security camera systems at each of our elementary schools, as well as access control systems for all of our ECPPS campus schools. We are looking forward to beginning these new projects in March in collaboration with S3 Integrations. And as always, thank you for your continued support. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question and I'd, I'm sure it's not gonna come out right as I'm trying to um to think of it as we're talking. The insurance versus no insurance decision. How do we get to no insurance over how many devices? Like, how many devices are there that we had no insurance on?
The coverage that we, the quote that we received for the coverage last March for insuring all of the devices that we had at the time, which would have been staff and student devices, what we asked for the quote for, would have, in order for us to have broke even, from my understanding, we would have had to have lost four hundred and, four hundred ninety-eight devices, which we did not. So we would have paid well over what we have, would have, we would have been at a loss.
These are deductible that's involved.
Which you're still paying at one hundred thirty-six thousand a year.
Right, so that would have, and that policy, because we look at several different policies. So that policy was full coverage, so that policy would not have had the deductible.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand how we gave out the devices, no insurance, and didn't expect to get them back because there's no insurance. So if we, if we lost the devices or they weren't returned, there's no guarantee that we would get those devices returned outside of the um, the good faith of our students and families. So when the device is lost or what have you, there's really no, again, recourse, I guess that's what I'm looking for. But going forward, with the three steps that you talked about with the attorney, that's gonna I guess, put some safeguards in place for us when it comes to, okay.
That is the hope. Yes, sir.
I mean, we are seeing researches other options for insurance. But outside of those, we are looking, um, we're in consultation with um Intuitive POI as well. So that's why I think where some of these deductible plans came in, the fifty and one hundred dollars, what they offer. The School Board Trust, um, they're deductible to fifty, and that's about the same cost as the device, about the time you pay the deductible and you bought the device.
And I thought the first two steps that I mentioned with Godfrey, when we were talking about what we work with, fantastic, I guess step three should be like the hardest of hard lines, I'm saying, on the top like this. So if they get that running together, I'll be looking forward to what they're gonna um recommend. Thank you.
Absolutely. We, we do have letters one and two ready. We're waiting for our recommendation from our board attorney for the le- the third letter.
Ms. Godfrey, just remind me, how many devices are we not entitled that you shared?
So the number that we shared during last week's presentation was 210. That included, that also included devices that had been lost, students that have transferred and not returned as well, once they were stolen. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So when we're looking at the $136,000, that would be annually, that's 12 months, I'm sorry. That's a total of 12 months. Then you have a $250 deductible for the first one, which is still paying the $136,000. And so we have a $250 deductible. We had 210 not returned, and we would have to have 498 not returned in order to cover the amount. It's not, it's not cost effective to pay out 136, other measures, yeah, but to pay $136,000 if you're losing money, so that's.
Yeah, that makes, that makes complete sense, but I just still have an issue with turning over a device without some type of, like, safeguard.
And actually, there was a document, because you shared that document, that was put in place. It's having parents to adhere to it. And as we discussed that last week, the concern I have is for a child who could be at home because of a COVID situation. Let's say it's a child that's at home, but maybe it was in the family, the child doesn't have COVID, the child could still be working, and now they have no device. So how is that considered? I mean, I don't know the answer, but that's why it kind of bothered me with saying that the device had been stolen or sold. What do we do with that child? Would that just be considered an absent? You know, they don't have a device, but they're not coming to school. I mean, I think it is something we have to further discuss. I just, I don't know the answers to that, though. So we're almost punishing a child for being innocent.
Did you say last, did you say last week you gave them another device?
We did, well, they did, right, and that's what I'm saying. You give another device, but then there's a concern with giving another device, but there are no ramifications, and that's what we're discussing now. Again, it's just a lot to think about when we're not, you consider parents, but you're concerned about the children that are not being able to connect with their teachers because of this. Again, I don't know the answers to it, but again, I am looking to what the third letter will say to try to encourage parents to, you know, to use them for the purpose.
I will say, and I told you last week that I would reach out to other directors across the state, and I did, and other districts are in the same boat that we're in with those that went one-to-one when March hit. They are having the same issues that we're having. It's a new issue for us because, you know, before, we had one-to-one in the classroom, but we weren't sending them home except for the early college. And, you know, I asked them for things that they were trying to do. They're trying to do the same things we are. So we're kind of learning together, and I will continue to reach out to them and them to us as we kind of move forward. Thank you, okay, thank you. And now we have Dr. Amy Spencer, and she is going to cover the 2021-22 school calendar. Good evening, Board Chair and Committee Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perez, Interim Superintendent Mrs. James Davis, board members and colleagues. This evening, you have before you FBT-08 for action, the proposed 2021-2022 school calendar for the traditional school and Elizabeth City Pasquattank Early College. The proposed calendars meet calendar requirements as mandated by the state in North Carolina General Statute 115C-84.2 and reflect the input and feedback from Elizabeth City Pasquattank Public School staff. Three calendar options were created that followed the state requirements. The teacher advisory council that has representation from each school was presented the three options. The representatives asked questions and provided feedback, and then the calendars were revised. The calendars were then sent to the representatives to share with their staff at their respective schools. They brought back their questions and feedback as a committee and then voted on two options. These two options were sent to all staff in a survey. The calendar with the most votes is option two, which is before you this evening as the recommendation. The Elizabeth City Pasquattank Early College follows the state requirements for the traditional calendar, but mirrors the community college schedule. Are there any questions?
And you're asking for us to take action on these?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions or concerns about either one of these calendars? I'd like to offer a motion that we accept the Option Two calendar that has been presented for us for the 2021-22 school year, as well as the Option Two calendar for the early college for the 2021-22 school year. I need a second.
I'll set.
Okay, I've had a second. May we have a roll call vote on these? Tamara, yes? George Archilotta?
Yes.
Virginia Houston?
Yes.
Daniel Spence?
Yes.
Rodney Walton?
Yes.
Dr. Sheila Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Spencer. And we're going to move on now to the strategic planning update from Mr. Martin, who is our education consultant from RTI.
Thanks so much. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perez, Mrs. James Davis, and board members. I'm just returning to you this month just to kind of review what we talked about briefly last month and kind of give you a sense of our way forward. Obviously, when we started this work this spring, we couldn't have anticipated exactly how this year would go, but I think have a really solid foundation for our sort of strategic plan for the district. So just kind of wanted to review very quickly what I went through in more depth at the last meeting and just talk about next steps and take any questions. So at the last meeting, we talked about the three sort of core priorities that surfaced out of our work throughout the summer and fall. The first being focused on our students. So that is anything from early education to rich elective to social emotional health and wraparound services, but a real focus on students and student outcomes, and not just test scores, but outcomes across the board for students. And then the second part being that, underlying this, we have to esteem and elevate our educators. And we heard this so much in the feedback that we got, but the connection between students and educators and the sort of idea that teacher working conditions are student margin conditions. And so we have a lot of sort of actions underneath that, obviously, starting with recruiting, hiring, and selecting teachers, steaming them and professional learning opportunities that come with them. And then lastly, the idea, and I think this was really grounded in how this entire process took place to do with the community, to get the community's feedback constantly and throughout, and think about how we communicate and how we partner with the community and create an open and welcoming environment. So I think those three core priorities really provide the backbone for the strategic plan. And based on discussions that we've had and thinking about timing, what we plan to do in terms of next steps is we'll, the strategic planning framework, all the data we collected from the community questionnaire, focus group discussions, and the development team meetings, we'll provide all of that data to the staff and the incoming superintendent. And just as a reminder, I think I mentioned last time, we had over 1,000 responses from, you know, from community members, the faith community, lots of parent responses, lots of teacher responses at the middle and high school level, and had a really good representation, I think, of the community in terms of open-ended feedback and response to that questionnaire. So we'll turn all that over. And then I think the thought is because the board at this point will be embarking on a hiring process, it makes sense that the incoming superintendent would be able to put his or her mark on the strategic direction with the board. So it will sort of allow the new superintendent, as he or she is hired, to have conversations with board members and community and staff to influence the strategic plan moving forward. One thing I will say in my experience before COVID, that there's just so much value in face-to-face, and especially face-to-face with the district's leadership. And so we think there's a lot of value in, you know, as things progress into the summer and as you all are able to hire a new superintendent, to just give that person the chance to dialogue with the community around this. We feel like we have a great foundation and a lot of data that will give the new superintendent a running start, just about information from the community that will guide his or her leadership. But I think at this point, our sort of recommendation would be that all of this data and the framework be sort of turned over to the staff and hopefully can be used by you all as you hire. And then really, before we come, before it comes to the board for a vote, we'd really get the new superintendent to weigh in and just have time with the community as well. So that's just kind of an update that we wanted to provide to you. We've really appreciated the opportunity to do this work with you all and really appreciated all the candid feedback we got across the community and are excited by what this strategic plan framework will mean for the future of the district. So with that, I will just say thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions if you all have any questions.
Thank you, Michael. As I said, I think this is going to be a very good start for us to begin our process with hiring a new person. And it will also give the new person quite a bit of insight into our system and into our community. So I appreciate the outstanding work that you have done for us on this. And I assume that you will send all this information via email to either Rhonda or myself?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or concerns for Michael before we move on? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the personalized education committee, Ms. Perez.
Ma'am, we will have the consolidated school improvement plan presentations. Dr. Amy Spencer?
Board Chair Warden, Vice Chair and Committee Chair Perez, Interim Superintendent Ms. James Davis. As I mentioned last week, each spring, the principals bring their updates to their consolidated school improvement plans to the board. These updates include the goals and strategies that have been developed to improve identified areas of weakness. As part of continuous improvement, school principals and staff review data and evidences from the strategies they have employed to achieve their goals. They analyze the evidence to determine how effective the strategy was and the impact it had toward meeting their goals. After this analysis, they determine next steps. Tonight, you will hear updates from the following schools. Principal Stephanie Ambrose from PW Moore, Principal Javonda Crutch from Pasquattank County High School, and Principal Jamie Liverman from Pasquattank Elementary School. Each principal will have five to seven minutes to present their updates, and they will answer any questions you may have at the conclusion of their presentation. So we will start with Principal Stephanie Ambrose from PW Moore.
Good evening, Board Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perez, Interim Superintendent Ms. James Davis, board members, colleagues, and the community of ECPPS. I bring greetings to you from the Lion's Den. Next slide. Our first slide shows the end of grade testing data trends. We do not have any data from the 1920s school year. But what are we going to do to improve the trends from where we are at this point? Next slide. Our first goal is to give each student at PW Moore a personalized education to support the students socially, emotionally, and academically. Students will demonstrate growth through both formal and informal assessments. Well, how are we going to do that? We are going to have weekly PLCs with our staff members, as well as weekly grade-level meetings. During those grade-level meetings and PLCs, we will dig into the data. We will discuss the data. We'll determine where our students are and where they need to be. We will have intentional planning for small group instruction based on the unmastered skills that the students have presented. We will have differentiation for small group instruction, and we're doing that during our Lion Pride time each morning from 7:50 to 8:50. All students have different needs. Where do we get this information from? Well, we dug into the already data from the beginning of the year, as well as the middle of the year for reading and math. Our students also have growth checks, and our teachers monitor the students and take weekly notes as they are doing small group instruction. The staff analyzes the data to determine where our students need to go in order to have a smooth transition. How do we know it's working? Well, we give multiple assessments to determine the gaps in reading so that we know where to aim the instruction. This year, we have literacy footprints that we have purchased that is similar to what we used to use as in-class data so that we can give an assessment for our students and know where they are exactly. Then we can assign independent levels for them. We also have our teacher observations to determine the gaps in math. We have data collections where the teachers make notes each week when they work with the students during small group instruction. Our staff receives training for intervention time and ongoing support throughout the week, throughout the day, as well as throughout the year. Some days, we have given this PD to the staff on Wednesdays that we can come together through videos so that we know exactly how to form our small group instruction. Our next goal is to create and maintain relationships between the staff, the students, and the community to promote a safe, respectful educational environment for all stakeholders. We are Team Lions. We are teachers educating all minds as we learn individually on needed skills so we can all be successful. So how are we going to reach out to the people in our community? Through Parent Square, emails, phone calls, Blackboard Connect, chatting in the Lion's Den. Our supporting evidence, our Title I virtual events have increased. We had a winter virtual event where I read a book to kick it off, and then Mr. Lawrence started playing along with the guitar as students requested songs to be sang. We have parent conferences at the end of each quarter. And again, chatting in the Lion's Den, where I invite the parents to come in and talk with me as the principal of the school. I share hot topics, and then I ask them to share concerns that they may have going on with them. Evidence is revealed. We have an increase in parent involvement on our conferences. We've had an increase in parent participation on our events, whether Title I or school events. We know the correlation between parent involvement and student leads to success for all. Excellent. So what are we doing? Lion Pride time. Lion Pride Time, face-to-face for every student in our school each day from 7:50 to 8:50 every morning. All staff in the building work with students either one-on-one or in a small group, maybe of two students, to focus on the skills that they have not mastered. We want to fill these gaps in their education so that they can have a smooth road ahead. We are also doing intervention for our Tier Two students. In grades K through two, we have face-to-face as well as virtual intervention, tutoring after school for grades one through five, and we're partnering with Sylvan, of course, for our third through fifth graders. We have 75 students that were signed up for that. How are the students at P W Moore doing? The students at P W Moore are enjoying the Lion Pride Time. They're opening up to their teachers. They're reading. They're wanting more time with the teachers. They're enjoying this time to socially talk with them as well as when they're learning to say, I want more. I want to read another book and I do this. Our December raffle, as you can see, this is a picture of some of the items that we have had to raffle. This was to increase attendance, increase assignments being turned in, increase the students' time for our ready for reading and math. One student asked our instructional coach, when can we have another spirit week? I said, we can do that every week, but that's what it's going to take to get our students involved. So we just had our second spirit week. Next, we want to know how are the staff at P W Moore? Our staff are doing good. We need to show some care for them as well. So we have a self-care card that we roll around once a week, once a month. When we feel that they need a picker-up, we roll the card around so that they can have a treat. We have weekly reflections during our PLCs and then I do a monthly treat for our staff members. At P W Moore, we are more than a school. We are a family. This is a brief update of where we are at this time. Do you have any questions?
Is the Lion Pride Time, is that just for face-to-face students or is that for virtual students as well?
Lion Pride Time is only for our students that are in the building face-to-face. It's before the students log on for virtual instruction.
Do they have time to socialize with each other or is it?
Lion Pride Time is an intervention block that we use to differentiate instruction for the students based on the data from the middle of the year, our ready. So we look at that data, determine where their holes are, and then we meet with them face-to-face to try to pave them for those holes.
Are there any other questions for Principal Ambrose? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Principal Crutch from Pasquotank County High School. Thank you, Principal Ambrose.
Good evening, just want to make sure you all can hear me?
Ms. Crutch, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Vice Chair Perezza, Board Members, Interim Superintendent Rhonda James Davis, colleagues and guests. My name is Javoni Crutch, I'm the proud principal of Pasquotank County High School. Tonight, I will present an update to our consolidated school improvement plan. Next slide. Our theme for this school year is virtually unstoppable. This was chosen by our students. Although this year has not been like any other year, we realize and we are virtually unstoppable and we do this by working together. This is just a glimpse of graduation last year, although not the traditional ceremony. Graduation is always a wonderful glorious day. I like to think it's because parents, staff, and students get a chance to see all of their hard work and tears finally pay off in the form of prepared graduates with several choices for their bright futures. Whenever I think this work that we do is too difficult or whenever I feel that too tired or we're too tired, I make sure I get graduation pictures out as they remind me that the work that we do every day is necessary, important, and possible. Next slide. If you take a look at our data, you will see color-coded cohorts, if you will, over the past few years. We only had follow-up data last year, which represents about half of the scores that we would have normally had. There are also other metrics that determine our school letter grade, like the ACT test, work keys test, and four-year graduation rate. As you can see, we have a lot of room to improve in our E O Cs and in the work. While the passing ACT percentage held steady, we are excited that our graduation grew to 82.9%. Although we are unsure about testing for this year, we are working toward our target goals in the bold column. When reached, we will show growth in all areas, most importantly, individual student. Going forward for the rest of the semester, we will utilize T E 21 data to determine our progress toward these targets. We're actually taking T E 21 tests this week and then we'll take them again in April. Next slide. So we have a plan to attain growth in these areas. The first sit goal is that we create a school-wide culture where all of us analyze student data, reflect, collaborate, and incorporate best teaching practices to ensure high levels of learning for all students. And although I have three strategies here, I want to focus on the first one, which I also think is the most important, and that is building effective PLCs. Sometimes teachers change, administrators move on, but what cannot change is our ability to build collective efficacy within our schools. The most effective ways to do this is having high-functioning PLCs. We are creating a structure to collect, analyze data, reflect, collaborate, discuss, and implement high-yield strategies like Avid school-wide. Effective PLCs is how we're going to get those E O C scores up and show growth in all areas from the data you saw in the previous slide. The other strategies are building ACT-certified teachers. We currently have 10 and also unpacking, continuing our work with unpacking the standards. If I could just go back to building PLCs again, we know they're working because we're building trust within. And also, we have a PLC structure that connects everything together. Next slide, please. Our second goal is to strive to make sure that all students are engaged and connected to their schools, their peers, and their community, and to ensure that we provide a safe and secure educational setting. And we're doing that through our work with SEL activities. Teachers are required to do activities at least once a week, but the majority of them do it multiple times within the week. What we've learned is that focus. We've also learned various ways to reach students and incorporate SEL activities in the classroom, and we have increased SEL activities. Since the beginning of the year, we share SEL strategies at every type of meeting that we have. So that's whether it's a staff meeting, an M T S S meeting, or general PLC meetings. And at this point, we've shared a strategy, shared and modeled over 100 strategies. The other thing that we're doing is making sure we connect to. And that was the second part of goal two. And so we're just trying to reach out as many different ways as we can. Next slide. And our last goal is to effectively use Panther Flex Time Smart to meet the academic, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. And even though, again, I share several strategies there, I'll talk specifically about the positive Panther Support Program. We just started this last week and we have sessions that are out of the school, regular school day. So we have early morning sessions, late evening sessions, into the night, weekends. We do this to support students when they most need it. We have academic sessions like tutoring or content support. We have SEL activities like music theory or playing the game. We've also incorporated life skills like applying for a job or job application help or applying for college and scholarships. We also have parent sessions. Our next steps is to collect data to ensure keeping up with the needs and the wants of our students. Next slide. All right, so this is a number excited about. This represents this $535,800 represents the scholarship dollars that have been awarded thus far to the class of 2021. We are, this currently surpasses the amount reported for the graduates of last year. Our goal, though, is $1.5 million. We believe that the best way to pay it forward to our students is that they are able to enroll in post-secondary experiences such as military service, four-year college, trade school, two-year college, or junior college. These experiences ensure that our students have options. These options have the power to help move families out of poverty as well as put a path to be able to fulfill their dreams.
Thank you, Principal Crutch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Crutch. Our final presentation this evening will be from Principal Liverman from Pasquotank Elementary School.
Good evening, Chair Warden, Vice Chair Perezza, Board Members Jamie Liverman, Principal Pasquotank Elementary School, with an update of our consolidated school improvement plan. Next slide, please. So we're getting ready to go over our goals and our strategies. Next slide, please. So our goal one, increased student achievement. We have a data-driven after-school program. We currently have 47 students that are participating in our after-school program. And this year, we're working with students K through five. Last year, we just focused in on the three, five students in the grade testing, but with everything that's happened this year, we just see a need to include all of our students. Our time, we do four days a week and our time is 2:30, 2:40 each day, and our parents do provide transportation. Our Road Runner time each morning is from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. And that's when we use this time to, again, provide small group, go back over and reteach strategies, objectives where we see that our students are still struggling with. And we do also, at this time, reach out to all learners, virtual and face-to-face. We'll continue to have student-led conferences. Of course, we're doing those virtually this year. New force this year is the partnership with Sylvan. Again, focusing on 75 students and we're really targeting, again, our virtual learners, trying to help our teachers with that transition because, again, it's new for the teachers this year and they're struggling somewhat still with reaching the face-to-face and the virtual learners. So we felt like Sylvan would be a good resource to come and help us to reach the virtual learners. As always, we continue to celebrate and praise our students for effort and growth. Another initiative new for us this year is that we want to offer a summer program, again, reaching out to K five and with a literacy focus. We're seeing, again, from our data across the board, reading literacy is still a concern. And so we're going to actually focus in on literacy for that entire program. Next goal, slide, please. Continue to build teacher capacity, of course, through virtual conferences and workshops. We use feedback from our evaluations, observations, and walkthroughs throughout the day. Of course, continue to have data-driven PLCs, professional learning communities to make sure that we're using the data. We're trying to work with the teachers to get them to be able to use the data to guide their instruction. Continued professional development on remote learning. Again, still see a need to continue staff development on Canvas, actually learning how to use the technology more effectively and efficiently, using the technology to enhance the curriculum because we know curriculum still drives instruction. Build instructional assistance capacity. Again, we see a need where we actually need to come back and work with our instructional assistants on helping the teacher to teach reading. We have a focus. We've enrolled all of our instructional assistants as well as teachers in Letterland, which is a research-proven strategy for reading, also corrective reading. So again, our big focus here is going to be on literacy. Many bootcamps for teachers. What we'd like to do, starting next month, is offer on some Saturdays, bring our teachers in and really be able to sit down and work with them on things such as data analysis, best practices, how to teach reading as an example. Next slide, please. And goal three, create a positive school culture. Again, we'll continue to move from the fixed mindset to a growth set, growth mindset. Again, a belief that all of our students can learn. Right people on the bus and the right seat on the bus. Continue to move staff around as the data suggests. We have good teachers, staff in the building, but sometimes we can have them in the wrong position. And so we're really not maximizing their expertise. Multi-tiered system of supports, again, that will help us to continue to create that positive culture. Again, it's framework for learning. So what we will be actually doing, focusing on the academics as well as the socio-emotional aspect of our students and not just the students, but the staff as well. And we will continue to maintain high expectations for all students and staff. Excellent. Any questions for you?
I have a question. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all you guys for what you're doing during this time. I guess remote learning is something that everybody is still getting used to and I commend your efforts on the 2020, 2021 year so far. Mr. Liverman, if you could give me an example of the student-led conferences in your goal one?
Okay, so doing like progress reports and report cards. Teachers are expected to have follow-up conversations with the students and the parents, having the students there to help explain, talk about their progress.
This is a follow-up to all three of the principals. What are the students actually like? We know how the adults and how the teachers have been handling it. How would you say, or how would you characterize your students' perception or activity engagement during this time, virtually and face-to-face?
So just being transparent, again, it's a learning process for all. I think our students have been great. Again, it's new, very positive, our students that are in the building and our virtual learners for the most part. But again, it has to be transparent and we're having some concern, we have some concerns with our fifth graders. We're not being, we're not getting them hooked in like we want to. But the rest of the grades... But the rest of the grades, I mean, the students of day are students who are participating. But we are struggling with getting some of those fifth graders on board.
This is to answer your question. I think the students are holding up fairly well, but I will say that the students are very similar to the adults. Depends on the day. Sometimes they're thinking, "We can do this," and then sometimes they're thinking, "I cannot do this any longer." That's why the social-emotional learning is so important, and making sure that you know where the kids are at a particular time. And we're making sure that we're taking the time to do that from this point on, and ensuring that we still have high standards, high expectations. Sometimes we struggle with everybody being present in the live meetings, and then even when they're in the live meetings, being present, being engaged, making sure you're following along and asking. And so we continue to work on that each day.
Thank you.
Mr. Liverman, can I ask you about these, your summer program? How long are you planning on having that last?
Right now, I'm looking. We're looking at trying to hold it for a month. You know, maybe longer. Again, it just depends on the funding. But actually looking at starting that soon after those last days for teachers that are, you know, required workdays. And taking it out, I was actually still looking at, want the teachers to have a summer. So actually going from like the end of June to, you know, July and still giving them, you know, well, I can't even go, depends on, I think we're starting earlier, so we're actually looking at mid-July with, you know, maybe stopping. So teachers still get a break, or feel like they've had a break.
Before K through five?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Have you already started getting kids who have committed to that, or you haven't started that process yet?
Getting, you know, staff on board that would actually commit. And, of course, looking at all of our data at the end to find out who we need to invite. We still, because of everything that's happening, still be concerned about our numbers, because we just, you know, we're going to have to be concerned and still looking at following, you know, CDC regulations. And so that's going to, you know, determine our numbers. But we'd like to, again, we want to get as many students in as possible. Again, just see with the reading, the literacy piece. Just a real quick share. Kindergartners, looking at some data and have some conversations. Comprehension is good. What we need to do is teach the students how to read. Teachers have been used to reading to the students, and so when they read to the students, the scores, you know, data looks good. So we've sort of been monitoring that and asked them to move away from that and actually begin to teach the students how to read. And so we just did another round of assessments again, and we see a tremendous difference when you're asking the students to read versus having the students, you know, to read. And so that's why, hey, we really need to work on this literacy from the really simple going all the way to the complex. We were going to really have a great focus, I believe, on using the Letterland K two. Then what we want to do is pick up three-five using the corrective read and to continue that literacy support.
Are there any other questions for our principals? Thank you all. Thank you all. Vice Chair Perezza, this concludes the Consolidated School Improvement Plan updates for this evening. Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you to each, each one of you for your presentation tonight. We appreciate it. We know how difficult and how challenging things are at this time. But it seems like you've got your hand on what you need to do, and you're going forward and doing it. So we appreciate all the work that you have put forth and you've shared with us tonight. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to the excellent educators. Dr. Williams is going to offer a motion on the items that we discussed during close.
I would like to move that we accept the items discussed in closed session.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second to accept the items that were shared in closed section, session this evening, and to need a roll-call vote. Ms. Sawyer, Pam Perezza?
Yes.
George Archileta?
Yes.
Virginia Houston?
Yes.
Daniel Spence?
Yes.
Rodney Walton?
Yes.
Dr. Sheila Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before this board tonight?
I have a question. Did you or Miss James Davis have any interaction with the group that we had who did our, well, who did the process now of doing our strategic planning? I heard him talk about the number of surveys and things that had, and so you had feedback with him in terms of looking at the surveys and the information together. Yes, and that's what he said. He would share all of that with us, all the information that he gathered. Okay.
I will say that several of the sessions that I sat in on were very good. There was a lot of community involvement. And it involved a huge expansion of our community from faith leaders to community leaders, business, personal, you know, business persons. But everyone felt very comfortable in sharing the information. You know, I think it was very valuable. And as I indicated when we were discussing about our process, our search process, I think it is going to help us, the information that we gathered from those planning sessions.
Okay, I just, I wasn't aware, and when he gave the report, I just felt like I was I didn't really have a clue, and so I thought I didn't have to ask.
And I wasn't involved in those sessions, in all those sessions, from the beginning, because when Dr. Robinson was the chair, he, you know, he wasn't involved. But then when he left the chair position, then I started being involved.
Even when he had the focus groups? I'm sorry, when he had the focus groups, he had focus groups of community. He had focus groups of teachers, focus groups of all of our principals at separate times, and focus groups of like our class five staff or the staff, the non-licensed staff. I would go in just to introduce him, but then I left so that he can get open and honest feedback. But then the community survey stayed up from like November through some point in December, and that's where he said he got over a thousand some responses for those, and all of that would be shared.
Any other questions or concerns? All right. I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Sawyer? Pam Perezza?
Yes.
George Archileta?
Yes.
Virginia Houston?
Yes.
Daniel Spence?
Yes.
Rodney Walton?
Yes.
Dr. Sheila Williams?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you.